Welcome to Wednesday's April twenty-third Commissioners Meeting. If you will stand, join me in the pledge and short prayer.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America. To the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we again come before you to conduct the business of our county. We ask that you grant us wisdom to make sound decisions for our community. In your precious name, we pray, amen. Have the Commissioners had an opportunity to review the minutes previous meeting? And if so, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made in second to approve. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. The Commissioners had an opportunity to review the claims. And if so, do I have a motion?
So moved.
And second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second to approve. Claims, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. Have the Commissioners had an opportunity to review the payroll? And if so, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. I have the Clerk's monthly report. Do I have a motion?
Move to accept the report.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. I have a monthly report for weights and measures from March seventeenth through April sixth. Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
I second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries three zero. Have the monthly IT report from March. Do I have a motion?
I move to accept the report.
My second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carries three zero. The report now from Mr. Murphy is not here. Said this is basically, do we want to accept this report as presented? So do I have a motion to do so from the RDC?
Motion to accept.
I second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Rachel McClurg. I guess Rachel's not here. Okay, we'll move on. I've got nobody from the chamber. Nobody from our insurance. Department reports. Angela.
Tonight, I bring before you two requests for opioid funding. And the first is for the Women's Recovery Center for Henry County. And do what? It's green. Is that better? Maybe I just wasn't talking into, okay. So I bring before you tonight two requests for opioid funding. One being the Women's Recovery Center. And I'm gonna let them go first and then you just have an update. And if you have any questions beyond what you have on the proposal, please feel free.
Good evening. So in front of you, I know you have the proposal. You've kind of read about our program, know about our program. I wanted to add, we have already started the equine. So we've already got that going. And currently, we have four women in our program. Do you want me to just like go for the ask or answer any questions? How do you want me to proceed?
Can you?
Oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, if you could tell us, just summarize for us again, even though we've read it, how long you've been open, how many people have gone through? And what you feel like your successes are so far?
Yeah, so we've been open since November. Totalling, we've had eight women. But as you know, sometimes they can come and they can go. And so we have four women right now who have stayed with the program and are doing very well. I would say a big success with our program is the testimonies that we're hearing coming out of it. But also just the structuring, the new structure that we're putting in it to make it more structured for the women and to make sure that they are getting the healing that they need before moving on out.
What's the total length of your program from start to end? Does it have a concrete?
Timeframe, yeah. So at the beginning, you know, we didn't want to put a timeframe on it because we want to make sure these women get fully healed before getting out. But that's part of the new structure we've put in. We, so we've put in a six-month program, okay? Every, we have three phases in that six months. Each phase is eight weeks long. But they have to hit certain criteria to move up. So that way, that still leaves room for if a woman needs to stay with us six or more than six months, then we can be able to pinpoint that and see that she needs more time. So say Phase One, they have to do like at least seventy-five percent of the homework. Their attendance has to be on par. They have to have not failed a drug screening, you know? And so if, if any of that is, if they're not coming to class, if they're not doing the homework, we're not gonna move them up. You know, that's saying, okay, you need, you need more work. You need to create better habits. You need, you know, different things to, and so they may have to redo Phase One before we bump them up. So we want this to be a program that they are getting full healing, that we are able to see the red flags and address them and not just push them through. So we're hoping that this kind of structure allows us to see those red flags, address those red flags, but also move them along as they are healing.
Is the eight hundred dollars the cost for the programming or does that?
Two hundred a week.
And does that include your overhead for the facility you're using?
That's like for scholarships for the women. That's not for general funding. And right now, we don't necessarily, like right now, our limit is twelve women. But we haven't hit that yet, so I'm not sure. I'm, I hope that we can hit that. But right now, we haven't hit having ten women in the program at a time, so, or twelve women in the program at a time. So we're just looking for help for scholarships for these women to get us kind of through the next year. We still have the plan for a store. So we are working on that to help self-sustain us, so.
I'm excited about the program, excited about the faith-based approach. And thanks for answering my questions.
Do you see yourself getting to your self-sustaining point?
Yes, yes, we are getting closer and closer, yeah. So we are moving on, we're, we're not doing, well, I don't know if you know this or not, but we did have that space that was right by Cafe Royale. It's gonna be a storefront. However, we're going more online. So I could go into detail, but I might bore you with it. But there's a new way of shopping online, right? That's a lot better and it takes less time for us and we can make more money. So we're moving to that avenue. And we are hoping to have that up and running here in just a couple of months.
So you said your storefront, is that what you said?
Yeah.
So you're, that it would be an online store?
An online store.
Our funding?
Yes, so my husband owns Indiana Eastern Palate Liquidation, okay? So we can get good product and be able to sell it. So we have good resources that will be able to help us really make some money. And I know that we all, our time is precious. And so having it this way is also more sustainable for us time-wise, right? Versus opening a storefront that has to be managed every single day, eight hours a day. This is a lot more manageable, you know? And the women will be able to work it as well. So, yeah. It's, it's, that part is moving along. So we kept, just kept kind of coming up against roadblocks with the storefront, you know? So we had to pivot and I believe this pivot is a lot better than what we had before.
Is the floor open for a motion?
I'm gonna say it is.
Do you want to wait to hear both?
Well, I guess, so you're, what's your, your total ask at this point?
Yes, for the year up to seventy-two thousand dollars.
And if you weren't able to, if you didn't, you say we grant seventy-two thousand, vote for seventy-two thousand, if it's not used because you don't fill the facility, then those funds would just remain unused for the year. So you're asking, you're asking for up to seventy-two thousand if you're able to fill the facility to that extent.
Right, right, right. And our hopes are, yes, to fill, to fill it up, yep.
The committee recommendation was to fund the project with half now and half after three months. At or near the three-month mark, we would ask for an update to the Commissioners regarding the project's progress. Does that sound doable at this?
Did you say to come back in three months for the, is that what you said?
Yes. Yes.
Sure, yeah, we'll come back in, yeah, come back in three months. Are you saying you're gonna, that's what you're requiring of us is?
It would be, that was the recommendation, recommendation from the vetting committee. And so that's what we're looking at as far as our option, whether we want to do that or not.
Got you, you're just asking if I'd be willing to come back in.
Yeah, and if we voted to do what the committee recommended, if that was, okay. So I guess at this point, I would entertain a motion.
Can I make a comment first?
Yes, you can.
When you guys do these fundings, can we ask that you not do it up to? Can you set a definite amount?
Yes, you absolutely can.
When we do the reporting, it's very hard when we do an up to amount. We need a set amount.
Yes, you, you explained that to me earlier and it's creating havoc with the opioid money and the ARPA funds because we did a bunch of up twos. So we are going to cease and desist from doing up twos. It's going to be a set amount from here going forward unless my colleagues say that my voice doesn't count anymore. So we'll do that, so.
So I would make a motion to approve thirty-six thousand dollars of opioid funding now and ask Megan to come back in three months for a progress report to be given or to be given to Angela. And we'll reconsider the other half of the request at that time.
Second.
I have a motion in a second for thirty-six thousand dollars to be given to the Henry County Women's Recovery Center. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and then the next project is an expansion on to Hagar's Hope. The recovery housing, what they're calling the Williams Street. It's the home that was gifted to them and in regard to the repairs and upkeep. And they do have a PowerPoint. We haven't heard from them for a while, so I encouraged them to come and give us an update because so many things have happened, they've come so far. So I'll turn it over to Hope Initiative and, yes.
I'm Nan Polk, I'm the President of Hope Initiative. And Jamie. And we are the fiscal agent for Hagar's Hope while they are getting their 501(c)(3). And I think you have the request and the information. We thought we'd go through the PowerPoint and kind of talk about what's been going on. Okay. We are currently in the Bennett House because getting the other home, which was donating us renovated and inhabitable, was just gonna take too much time. We saw an immediate need and we wanted to address that need and the Bennett House was available. So we took that and got that up to, so it was, it was a nice place for the ladies to live. And we did an awful lot of work on it and had an immense amount of volunteer effort. And the ladies have been living in that since May first of last year, so about a year. So really put it in my mouth. Here we go. All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
So like I was saying, we chose the Bennett House for the time being because it was available. It did need some renovate, remodeling and some sprucing up before it was really ready to be inhabited. And we did that with an awful lot of volunteer work. And in May, we, we started our program. And we were given the Williams House. And it just needed an immense amount of renovation. So we have been working very, very diligently. After, as soon as we got the Bennett House ready to go in, it was like boom, we started on the Williams House. So this is, that's where we are located at this time. And, next slide. Jump in if you've got any questions at any time. There's Jamie. In order to become a 501(c)(3) and to establish Hagar's Hope, there was a board established. It has grown to ten members. Jamie Owens is our director and she works tirelessly at this. I don't know when she sleeps, but she's, it's, it's phenomenal what we've been able to accomplish. We are renting the old Bennett House and that really will not be sustainable. When we get into the Williams House, we should be able to become sustainable with the rent that the, the women pay. We have had a massive volunteer effort to renovate actually both homes. Women go through an interview process before they are accepted. There is a rules and expectation agreement that they have to sign. I think the maximum we've had has been eleven, ten. And we could have more. Currently, there are five. And we actually have had two that have graduated and, they all have jobs, okay? That's part of what we work on is to get them to be self-sufficient. They all have jobs, two have homes and one has actually started their own business. So we really feel like we've had for one year, a tremendous record of success with, with what we've been trying to accomplish. And I'm not sure what you're doing there, Jamie. What are you doing? Okay, that was their table at the health fair. Yeah, that does look like the Baptist church. You know, I'm not sure what the goats are. Can somebody help me with the goats?
I, I have a goat farm, I have a farm with goats. And it's just fun to bring goats places. I mean, I could bring some here if you wanted. We have lots of babies right now. But I took some goats into the house for the girls to interact with and they really enjoyed it.
Well, that's fun. Okay, there you go, kids. There are kids there. But this is the Bennett House. And as we, it's just an example of, of all the people that were working there to get it where the place where we wanted for the women to have. And a lot of man-hours and a lot of donated items. We've had quite a bit of help from the community. The center there is, we got the Women's Circle of Friends grant. And we, trunk or treating. We've got some money from the Forest Ridge Holiday Bazaar. It really has been a community effort to get this, this up and going. Washer and dryer was donated. The Baptist Church and the Presbyterian Church have both been big backers of this. So just showing community support in that we do try to go out and do other fundraising. Jump in with questions if, okay, next slide.
You're doing an awesome job right now, Nan, we'll let you go.
I can talk a lot. Okay, if you look up there on the upper left, we were gifted the, the house, but it was in severe disrepair. And we had to take away several raccoon families and their remnants with hazmat, literally with hazmat suits. And, but we did. And a lot of man-hours have been donated. There have been professionals that have helped us and they have donated a lot of time. Weather Tight especially, hasn't donated everything, but it has worked and tried to give us, I think, very good, a lot of work for our money. And it's just been a work in progress. It really had a home that was a lot of potential. When you go there and you look at it, it, it's just like, we can't tear this down. This is, just has too much potential, so. That was, yeah, sure, go ahead.
Weather Tight actually gave us a forty percent discount on the siding. So they have been a significant financial backer in terms of what the discounts that they've given us.
Yeah, and lots of, lots of man-hours. So new windows and new siding. And our volunteers have gone in and ripped up carpeting. They've taken down the walls to the studs, ripped out bathrooms. Like I said, they dueled with raccoons. Not really, but some of the remnants were raccoon, yeah. And so this is, this is in process here. And again, kudos to Weather Tight. Some of our helpers. And the work continues. A lot of outside lawn care work was done. You know, it was just a house, yeah, there wasn't much about it. It had been abandoned and there had been squatters that had lived in it. Not just the raccoons, but people's squatters. And, but with a lot of, a lot of work and a lot of love, here we go. Is that the last one? Oh, we don't have slides of the finished house, what we have now? I thought we had some pictures of the house as it looks now. Okay, well, I wish we did. It has new siding, new windows, a new front porch. Much of the inside has been gutted and the outside, we have a new roof. So the outside's in pretty good shape and is stabilized. We're ready to work on the inside. And we have some bids from electricians and from plumbers. And we're pretty much ready to move forward with that. We have, through a lot of work, and I want to give Ken and Gray a real nod because he went through and made a spreadsheet of all the work that needs to be done and some times when it can be, when workers can come and help. And it really, it's, it's amazing. What our intention is to do about fifteen thousand dollars worth of work through volunteer effort. And our ask today then is for sixty-five thousand to finish up the interior. So questions?
Ms. Joe? Susan?
I have a question. I, this is just a technicality. I love what you guys are doing and I support it. Are we funding from restricted funds or unrestricted for construction? So far, we've done everything under unrestricted, okay? So I saw. Okay, all right.
Anything else? Say, do I have a motion for total funds of sixty-five thousand? Was the committee recommendation to fund the project as presented? Group has demonstrated the ability to secure outstanding, outside ongoing resources. Has demonstrated successful completion of the program by their clients. So I would entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Motion's been made in second to approve the request. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
Angela, did you have anything else? Wonder's not here, Highway's not here, conveyor, planning commission. Matt, do you want to go ahead and go now?
So you have a busy agenda today, so I appreciate you letting me get up here early. This is kind of the culmination of the hard work of the Commissioners with ARPA and the Council with their. funding for vehicles. We're now in obviously a better spot. And what I brought to you today is we have eight surplus vehicles ranging from 2012 all the way to 2020. I sent out to our two buyers that we buy from Fletcher and Franklin and Russ Hubler here in town. The, to get a value on the vehicles or what they'd be willing to pay for the vehicles. Russ Hubler passed. They don't want to invest the funds. I can't tell you why, but Fletcher, who we've bought from in the past pretty regularly, got back with me immediately. You can see the individual price on that second page of their offer on the vehicles that has the VIN number, the mileage and the value. Twenty-eight vehicles, I think, I don't think, I know it's, their offer is $37,000 for that surplus vehicles. Which is probably more than we've ever gotten for our fleet in the past. So if there's any questions on any of the vehicles or anything like that, that's what I'm here for. But I would like to get the approval to dispose of those vehicles. And then obviously the money will come back to the general fund and that will, Susan knows that's kind of up to the council, we're to appropriate that from there.
I think that sounds like a great idea.
So you're not trading them in on a vehicle?
We're in a, we're in a position right now that we're not going to trade in the vehicles. We're going to just basically sell them.
Because we're talking multiple items over 5,000 in value, you've got to at least publish a notice that you're accepting proposals and then accept.
I, I know we went through this with National, that with the vehicles, they've now amended, because it was such a, a thing to do. Maybe I'm wrong and if you'll look into it for me, that would be great. Remember we had Natalie here, she went through the fact that they have changed that specifically for vehicles because it's a little different than selling a copier or a, a computer that if there's a vendor we use and they have a fair offer because they all using the same system, that we were, we could dispose of vehicles in that manner to make it clean and easy. Instead of selling one to one person and three to one person and. If you could follow up, that would be great, but that was my understanding when we did all those presentations last year. I know it's been a while and those were some long presentations, but they had amended the state statute for that, for that reason.
Well, unless we know definitely where they were paid from, it will go into county general. So I don't know if we can sit down and figure out.
Good luck, some of them for 2012, but what I'm saying is, I'm not here to say we want the, like the money. I'm just, this is what we have.
I wanted to make sure you.
And I just know in the past, the longer we keep them, they tend to end up just sitting around and the county gets no value back out of them. In this case, we would have the opportunity to, over since 2012 to, you know, this year, the money, at least some of it's coming back in to be used somewhere else within the county.
I'll say, because I guess my question was same thing as before was I thought maybe you would use some of these to trade up and start in a rotation that would benefit you more.
So luckily between what you guys did with us with ARPA and then the budgeting last year, I have a list of the vehicles. We're in a really good spot right now as far as vehicles go. There's not one patrol vehicle that's on the road that is not at least covered by the thousand mile, 10-year proud training warranty. Probably, I will, I'll say roughly half or still under three-year, 36,000 mile warranty. Some of these vehicles were like, for example, the 2012 was at the courthouse. The 2014 was a civil process vehicle. We've been able to take some of our other vehicles, move over to get them a better vehicle and pull this one back. So we're in a spot right now to really kind of not have to, because if we buy another vehicle, it's not just 37,000. It's going to be the expenditure of, you know, equipment and things like that. So in our, our thought was, we're in a good spot right now. And I think everybody's been working to push forward to keep us in a good spot. So if we can move these vehicles without spending more county funds on something else, then it's kind of a win-win. We, they don't sit out there, they won't sit over here. And then the council at some point can decide if, you know, what that could be used for or with the help of Debbie, where it can act, where it can go.
And I understand it's hard to trade up because you can't just go trade up because then you're short a car while it's being outfitted and everything.
$37,000 would get us really close to another vehicle. But then that also means, I can tell you, just roughly from doing the math the other day, i- if it was going to be a patrol vehicle, for example, minus the radars and the radios, which we've had to upgrade because some of that stuff is way outdated. Our rough estimate is $7,419.18 to then put everything into that vehicle to then make it a patrol-ready vehicle. And like I said, I'm going to knock on wood because I've been here 20 years last month. This is the best we've ever been in vehicles. Like we literally are in thankfully a good spot right now. Now that could change. Every budget's different, everything, but, but right now we're, thanks to you guys and gals, we're in a good spot. I'm glad to be able to say that and it was your guys' hard work just as much as anybody else's. So I, I think, sure, if we need to look into if we can move them all. I know this is, we're not the only agency that does this. Fletcher buys from agencies statewide. For this exact reason, because they have the outlet for these vehicles. That's what they do as fleet.
So Joel, what were you thinking that we needed to check on? Can we make a motion? Okay. Do we need to, do we need to wait or is there a motion contingent?
Yeah, that'd be great. Do you have any questions about the vehicles we're getting rid of or like, you know, like?
I know at one time you guys said you needed some extra vehicles. Does this take away from that and mess you up anywhere?
So on top of the vehicles we purchased, but we were able to purchase the vehicles from Hamilton County. Now we did, it wasn't like a, hey, this is a great vestee lever. We put money into them to get them where they are today. But between those, the vehicles purchased with the ARPA funds plus the vehicles with last year's budget, plus the amount the council allowed us this year for vehicle purchase. We are, like I said, there's not a patrol car, the oldest patrol car right now on the roads for the, where Henry County is a 2021 that was actually purchased in '22 as a leftover when Rick was still sheriff. And then we have taken the cars that either, it's like some of these 22s, they look like, hey, they're only 22s. But the liability, once we hit 100,000 miles on the Hemi is what gets us. Once those Hemis hit 100,000 miles, they, everybody knows, you can Google it, state police has had it. They have trouble with getting oil to the, to the top end and they spin a, or not bearing, but a valve. And it's $5,000. Right off the bat, it's $5,000 to fix it. And we know it's a flat cost. We've done it several times. So by keeping those cars or getting 8,000 out of them, you know, we potentially get 8,000 back to do some of those and take a $5,000 liability off our maintenance budget. Because they're going to happen, unfortunately. So to answer, I, I think we're good right now. Like I, I think if we weren't Sheriff's Proles would be in here talking to you about it.
Any other questions?
I make a motion to approve the sale contingent on what Joel works out with.
Second.
Have a motion second to approve the liquidation of these vehicles. All those in favor, second five saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
Appreciate it, thanks.
Debbie, do you have anything? See Jenny? Pretty much done with department head reports. Okay, next up on our itinerary. We have a quote from Piney for $9,839 to replace a gray water sewage injection pump. It has failed. The backup pump is keeping up for now. I don't believe this is something we probably should wait on. So I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion.
My second.
Motion's been made in second to approve the Piney quote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Next, we have WR Duncan change order for 12 and 13. This, one of them is for the wood floor mockup. They're going to do a section over here somewhere, roughly a six by six, I think it was, area to refinish the floor to see what it looks like, to see if it's worth us refinishing the entire floor. The mockup is roughly $3,662.40. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Second change order was to remove the handrail extension around the banister outside. We had previously gotten the bill for $2,538 for engineering and shop drawings. The total savings by reducing that is $27,292. So do I have a motion to approve that change order?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Next, we have an IT request and I was really hoping that Jeff would be here to explain this, but it was something he talked briefly with me about. It's desperately needed. The, the IT upgrades, the way they're doing it now isn't working. This proposal header is going to take roughly three hours of installation. And it also is a, has a following quote of one-time perpetual license for up to 2,500 interfaces. And cost includes one year of annual support, three hours of installation, deployment and product training. It's a total software network monitoring package helps diagnose issues and allow us to get to the root cause of any network problems. Software will help bridge the gap between the network monitoring troubleshooting, specifying when, where and why the problem occurred in a matter of minutes, helping us to maintain efficient, safe and reliable network. We're hitting a brick wall according to our IT. And if we were faced with doing this sooner than later, the total cost of this was $14,891.25. I was assured by the auditor's office that the money was there to cover this.
So Jeff has about $100,000 for IT improvements. And these are a few of the things he's prioritizing. And this first one, the, the software network monitoring is his, you know, one of his top priorities, so.
I'll say, do we want to do both of these at this time? I do too. Do we want to do both of them at the same time?
I think we can, yeah.
The other one is for $8,737.01. It's an additional network attached storage for maintaining extended backups and extra copies of county data. They have several of the Buffalo Terror Station devices now and they have proven to provide for a reliable solution. And so he's asking to add 96 TB, whatever that is, storage device, the weekly backup rotation that's been purchased from CDWG using the Indiana GovPro agreement. So.
You did it.
TB. I guess if you feel it necessary, it won't matter, but.
96 terabytes is a lot of data. So knowing over the years, data backups have been a huge concern. And the amount of storage and amount of files and the amount of data that must be done. In my opinion, if you had to, these two things with the monitoring and the backup storage are the two most critical things of the network. Because if something goes down and you don't have it backed up, you're not getting it back. So it is 96 terabytes. I run my servers, my dental offices on about one terabyte. So, and they have plenty of space, so it'll be plenty of space.
Thank you. So I would entertain a motion on these two requests.
I move to approve both IT requests.
My second.
Motion's been made in second on both requests. All those favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Next, we have the 25, 2025 renewal premium rates for the Optum for this critical care benefits plan. I was told it's no increase to the employees. The renewal premium rates for employees, $7.28. For them, their spouse, $16.41. Families, $22.10. Employee with children is $13.40. There is no increase, like I said, to the actual employees. This is a Optum Managed Transplant Program through United Healthcare Insurance Company. Managed transplant program is underwritten by United Healthcare, so.
This is something we already do.
We already have, yes. It's just renewal. So I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made in second to renew the Optum insurance. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. Next on our itinerary is Live Coalition presentation.
This has been a great civics lessons for our kiddos here, so learn a lot. So, good evening. My name is Miranda Wright and I am from the Henry County Live Coalition and I'm the coordinator. And I'm joined by Shay Beck's right there. She is the health, she is the Director of Health Promotion and Disease Prevention for the Henry County Health Department. And we're excited to be here tonight to share some of the incredible experiences we had during our recent trip to Washington DC, where we attended the CATCA National Leadership Forum. I will direct you over to our new logo that shows how we encompass all of Henry County schools. Because this is a joint effort between all of the community. Before we begin, we want to express our sincere gratitude to the commissioners for generously approving the funds that made this trip possible. Because of your support, six outstanding Henry County students were able to join us for the remarkable opportunity. One that we believe will have a lasting impact on their leadership and personal growth. Tonight, you'll hear not only from us, but directly from our student ambassadors. They'll offer their unique perspectives on what they learned, how the experience shaped them and why this trip was so meaningful. During our time in Washington DC, our students participated in a variety of impactful educational sessions focused on youth substance use prevention, coalition building, community engagement and effective strategies for working with young people. These sessions not only provided valuable knowledge, but also inspired our students to think more deeply about how they can be leaders in prevention work within Henry County. In addition to the conference, we explored many historical and cultural sites, including the Holocaust Museum, national monuments and significant government buildings. Sorry about that. Our students also had the chance to try new foods and engage with people from diverse backgrounds, experiences that broaden their perspectives and deepen their understanding of the world beyond our county. One of the most powerful moments of the trip was meeting with Representative Shreve. The students delivered a thoughtful presentation engaged in meaningful conversation about the challenges facing our youth in Henry County related to substance use. They shared handwritten letters expressing their concerns and their passion for prevention efforts. We spent approximately 45 minutes with the representative, about 20 of them directly face-to-face with him. It was an incredible, it was incredibly encouraging step in building a lastful, lasting and impactful relationship with Representative Shreve. We continue to reach out to him and make sure he knows who we are and where we are in Henry County and who our students are. Although all the students couldn't make it tonight, we do have a few here that want to share their experience and reflect on their trip. And again, we thank you for the opportunity to have taken these students. And on a personal note, I just want to say, our students were phenomenal at this, at this, there were thousands, I don't know, 4,000? I don't know. There were so many kids and so many. And we felt very lucky and blessed to be able to have, they were well behaved and they listened and they learned and they reflected. And we were just so proud to represent Henry County. So I'm going to let each one of them, we'll start here. You don't want, okay, okay, easy, easy one here.
Hi, how's it going? I'm Elijah Blanketship. I'm a junior in Newcastle High School. And one of my most memorable experiences was the connections I got to make. And one of my most memorable experiences was the connections I got to make. Um, meeting Representative Shreve and then also getting to be here with you guys today. Um, so just meeting these important people, but also getting to know students my age that are interested in the same things that I am. I met people from New York, Connecticut, uh, Ohio even. It's just the connections I got to make, and then also with people in my own community, getting to make friends and, um, people I would have never met in the first place. Oh, I did. Um, I'm a junior in Newcastle High School, yep, yep, thank you.
Hello, my name is Owen Barrett, I'm also a junior at Newcastle High School. And I also want to say thank you guys for this opportunity, it was amazing. And my favorite part about it was our youth breakout session where we got to work together as our youth advisory board. And we were given a task and just seeing all of us come together to try and, you know, better our community was really like impactful to me. And it just meant a lot to see people who live in the same community as I do getting together and trying to make a change for the better. Thank you, guys.
Um, hi, my name is Cameron Brewer, I am a junior from Knightstown High School. Um, so sorry, I'm not from Newcastle, I think those do, but, um, I really thought it was really interesting. My favorite thing was going and talking to Shreve, especially going with this group, this was an amazing group, and I felt so comfortable with them, which I was really nervous about first. If you can't tell from my rambling, I was really nervous. I get nervous easily. But I got to talk to Shreve and I got to talk to him about an issue we had at Knightstown where a student had to receive um, two things of Narcan, and that was all thanks to the Live Coalition being able to supply that to the schools. So I thank them for that, like deeply greatly, that was a student in my grade. Uh, and so I talked to that to Shreve, and it may not be correlated, but after that, after we had left, we had noticed that he had posted a thing on Facebook saying that he voted for the Stop Fentanyl Act because we had discussed that they had been putting fentanyl in debates and seeing that we got to make an impact within our community. It felt so great to see that such a young age, I still can make an impact. And I felt like getting to see everyone else around the entire, like, country that also wanted to make as big of an impact as we can, as anyone else can, and I just want to thank you guys for your time, for listening and letting us be here today.
My name's Gwen Beavers, I'm a freshman from Blue River Valley. And this opportunity to go to DC really helped us to learn all about a lot of things. We learned about how other coalitions are approaching substance abuse and even, and most importantly, youth substance abuse. That's what we're in our youth advisory boards focused on, we're focused on soup. Youth substance abuse. And we really got to like focus on, on how to prevent youth from abusing substances.
We have two students who are not here, one from Shenandoah and another one from Blue River. And so we didn't have anybody apply from Tri, but we're working, we're still working with Tri. It's, uh, reflective of our, um, our focus and our efforts to bring us all together, um, to tackle youth substance use in Henry County. And again, we thank you because this was a phenomenal opportunity, um, to build our youth advisory board. We will be in all the schools, um, starting, like, we're already starting it to build coalition, uh, to build, um, coalitions in each school as well, to grow it. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Because I have their parents here, I want to say something really quick. Um, because of these individuals, this sitting right here is the reason that they received the Teens Link to Care Grant, which is four hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the next two and a half years for this county. But it is because of those kiddos right here that we already had the advisory board on, in place. We were one of six counties in like three or four states that got that grant. So there'll be more to come from Shay on that later.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Next, I have a request from Knightstown. Mr. Ritchie.
I'm Kevin Ritchie, I'm with Knightstown Town Council, representing them tonight. And, um, we have a property on three oh one West Pine Street in Knightstown that's been abandoned and, uh, has been through a fire several years ago. And, um, also has been in disrepair. That apparently ha- has gone through some tax sales and, uh, they're, they've been through a lot of processes before I got on to try to get uh, something done with it, so it's gotten to the point where the town is requesting that we be able to, uh, or the commissioners be able to deed the property over to the town. Most likely, the property, the building or the house on the property would be torn down and then resold or what have you. But, uh, that's why I'm here tonight. See if we can get that deeded to the town. And I'm not sure what all questions you might have. Uh, but I might have some of them.
Well, I have, uh, been in contact with the Treasurer's Office and the Auditor's Office.
Uh huh.
And to make sure legally what our next step is, and unfortunately, from what I'm being told, it has only went through two tax sales. Legally, it has to go through three.
Okay.
And it has not done the third one, it has been flagged as far as the tax sale process. But we legally cannot give you this property because, uh, it has not completed the legal cycle yet.
Okay.
And even if we did, the only thing we could do at this point is you would have to pay the back taxes on the property. We could possibly, depending on, uh, the mood of the Board of Commissioners and the Treasurer's Office, waive the penalties and fines. Other than that, the back taxes would have to be paid by the town if they so desired to purchase the property.
Okay.
Uh, and if I'm missing anything, Joel, please jump in.
No, I mean, what you can assign, because you don't own record title to it, you could assign if, if you in fact had a commissioner certificate, that's what you could assign. And then the town would have to go through the redemption process. But it sounds like it's not at the point yet where it's ready for assignment of commissioner certificate. So then that's the case, then I guess it would just have to go through one more sale, and if it's unsold, then you'd be in a position where you could assign the certificate.
Now, my other suggestion, I don't know if you've thought of this, maybe you have, and I'm speaking out of turn, would be because I'm under the assumption the current owner is not opposed to not having the property anymore. So could your, your town attorney, you guys do a quick claim deed through him and, and purchase the property that way for those taxes? That might be a quicker, easier route for you than waiting for the next tax sale.
Okay. Writing all this down.
Because to me, that would probably be your quicker route to get the property purchased.
And I don't know honestly if they've been through that process before. Um, I would assume not, or I, they wouldn't have had me come here today, but I do know they've been unsuccessful with any communication with the property owner or owners.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I was gonna say, because I think one of the, well, it was our secretary had reached out to, uh, the gentleman, and I thought from what I had understood, the communication there was he had no intentions of doing anything with the property. So I don't know whether that meant he was ready to
Mm-hmm.
do something. So I didn't know whether you guys have been in contact with him or not, that was just a suggestion.
Sure.
It may not be worth the effort, but
Okay.
it was just an, it just a suggestion.
If it, um, if it does need to go through another tax sale, what would be the timeframe on that?
That I'm not sure of.
We just got the schedule this week, so I haven't really looked at it. It's either the end of September, first of October is the tax sale this year.
Okay. And do we need to do this contact back with you if we want this to be put on that or want to continue with that? Okay. All right.
And at that point, then I guess we'll, we'll do whatever we need to do next, but yeah, legally, right now, we, we can't.
Okay.
So.
I understand. I, I heard that that might be the case. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have informational purposes, we have Henry County Landville has an air permit uh, application. And we also have one from Draper. For, and I think there's is also an application, we had one approved for Greensboro Sand and Gravel. So all these are with IDIM. They were just information to let us know that these have been either applied for and/or approved.
Steve, is it appropriate to give any type of summary of the project? So, we always have questions when we approve these.
Well, there wasn't a lot of information on the actual projects themselves, they're just air quality.
Because Draper is actually expanding.
Yes.
And bringing in some new equipment. And that's what this is for, and there was there's a potential public hearing depending on what type of communication IDIM receives. Is that accurate?
Says application, supporting document, this proposed permit have been placed in the library indicated in the notice documents, more fully describe the project and applicable air pollution control requirements and how the applicant will comply with these requirements. If you'd like to comment on the draft permit, please contact the person named in the close public notice. Thank you for your interest in Indiana's air permitting program.
We received this on April eighth, and it says notice of a thirty-day period for public comment.
And normally those are sent to anyone and everyone who is in that area that has expressed interest or been, uh, deemed as an interested party. So, yeah, because this is another, like I said, it's an air quality, uh, that says, well, Environment Management received the application from Draper located on Pearl Street, Spiceland for a new source of review and renewal of its MISO issued on June twelfth of twenty twenty. Approved items of Office of Air Quality. This proposed permit would allow Draper to make certain changes in its existing source. Draper has applied and add a new powder coat line of assorted natural gas-fired units, including a natural gas-fired boiler, natural gas-fired cure oven, natural gas-fired dry oven or dry off oven, and a natural gas-fired infrared oven. Says the applicant intends to construct and operate the new equipment that will emit air pollutants, therefore the permit contains a new or different permit conditions. In addition to some conditions from the previous issued permits, approvals have been corrected, changed, or removed. These corrections, changes, or removals may include title changes and changes that modify synthetic minor emission limits. IDIM has reviewed the application, has developed preliminary findings consisting of a draft permit, several supporting documents, which would allow the applicant to make this change. A copy of the permit application and IDIM's preliminary findings have been sent to Spiceland Town Township Public Library on one oh six West Main Street, Spiceland, Indiana. Or you can find them on the internet at http slash www.in.gov. Apply's and IDIM slash C A A T S, so.
Thank you.
Says the date of this notice was posted on IDIM's website marks the beginning of a thirty-day public comment period. Thirty days to comment falls on a day when IDIM offices are closed to business. All comments must be postmarked or delivered in person next business day that IDIM is open.
And I didn't see any other details on the other two that would be helpful to read.
Okay. So that was for informational. Last thing on here is a resolution authorizing the filing of a CY twenty twenty-six application for the grant, un-grant under section S. What is that, five, five three one one slash five three three nine of the Federal Transit Act. Basically, this is to certify, uh, acting title Officer Deborah Walker, the Henry County Commissioners, and the ongoing correct copy list of the resolution adopted convening the meeting of Henry County Commissioners. Basically, this is for live stream services.
And I make a motion to approve this authorizing resolution.
Second.
Motion's made in second, then to approve, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Any comment from the public? Shay.
Soon as he passed the baton on my left, but it still ran into some traffic.
It's all right, there's only a five hundred dollar penalty for late arrivals. It's payable to the door.
Story of my life. So I've been very active since I took this position, you might not see a lot of me, but I feel like I've been learning. Um, I equate it to drinking water from a water hose, but the water hose happens to be a fire hose. Um, I have gotten all the federal, local, and state training complete. I have a federal computer through the USDA that I do my business on there because it is a USDA building. Um, that was quite a hurdle. Um, I had many clearances, I thought, prior to taking this job. I'm pretty sure there's a satellite devoted to me at this point. But it's a process, I've gotten through it now, I feel like I'm really making some great strides. Um, I've learned a lot since I've gotten there. But now the weather's warmed up, and that's when a conservation club gets really busy. Um, it also gave, the time that I wasn't as busy gave me an opportunity to really talk with people and find out what they wanted. One thing that's been huge for the Conservation Soil and Water Conservation District is the fact that we used to offer water tests. And we now have those tests available again. I can't give you the exact readings on these, they're very easy to do, they're a home test strip that they'll take to their home, they can run them underwater. And if you have a horrible reaction, or if you need further assistance, I have teamed with three different labs who they can then at their cost reach out to. They'll get them the correct laboratory readings from these water tests and additional water sources in their home and get them the right readings. But this does give you a very, very basic level water test, and this is something that I've had many people reach out to me about since I came in. The second one is a bacteria test. The pH levels on this are much more stringent. Um, again, these are tests that you need a degree to analyze, I'm not going to take that responsibility on, nor do I think we should from a liability standpoint. So the laboratories I've reached out to have been phenomenal. They will take an additional step if the individual so chooses to do so at their cost. However, we do have these available at Henry County Soil and Water Conservation District. Um, I will also be at the Henry County Farmers Market on the weekends this summer. Um, next week, the twenty-sixth, I have three hundred lilac seedlings to give away to kick us off. And I'm kind of excited about that. Trees are covered pretty well through solid waste management. But I felt like we needed something pleasant to bring to the table too. And the board was kind enough to approve me getting three hundred seedlings this year. If there's a huge response, we'll do more next year. It's the first annual. Um, plat books are something that people in the area are very um, happy to have and quite possessive of once they get them. I needed one to send as an example to a supplier. And getting somebody to give me one was really a, a trick. But I found one. Um, I've supplied them with some examples, we've chosen a, a very cost-effective company called Rockford MAP. And we should have the twenty twenty-five edition out by August first. So they moved really quickly with me as well. They will reach out to anyone in the county that owns over forty acres with a postcard. Gives them the opportunity to make any changes to their plaques that they might want. Um, but that was exciting because everyone I talked to when I originally started the project told me it would at least be next year before they could move forward. And Rockford MAP has not only said they could do better, they've proved it. And I meant, that means a lot to me. So those will be available on or before August first, according to their timeline. Um, in coordination with that. in coordination with that, it's going to be a quick one, but we're going to do a small photography contest for a local photographer to put a scenic photo both on the front and on the back of the plat book itself. The only thing I have to give him for a prize is a free plat book. But if they would like to submit their photo, have their name on the front as the photographer and take a free plat book as a prize, I'd love to have their entries. And I'm working with the Art Association on that to try to get some of those in. I need that back to Rockford MAP by the end of next month. So I know that's a short thirty day contest. Doesn't really have anything other than bragging rights associated with it, but it's kind of a fun community event as well. Um, beyond that, we are just working every day to try to get people, this rain has been a new and exciting adventure for me, I had no idea how many things washed out in a heavy rain, but I do now. So we're working hard within our CS, from loan services and from credit services to get people the assistance they need if available. Um, federal cutbacks have been another exciting adventure. Um, I went to work with a really nice young man from Puerto Rico who has now left us, so I don't have a naturalist, but I do still have my district conservationists within our CS. So we're slow, but we're getting there. Um, we're just gonna have to move you back a week maybe, because he's also working as the NRCS District Conservationist for Hancock County. So we're doing the best we can as far as getting to all the farm ground, but I think the things that we're bringing forward immediately will be really successful and well received. We're also privileged to take part in the Cool Climate Festival, which is May third. So at each and every farmers market that I can attend without a conflicting event. Um, we'll have some displays, we'll have some things for the kids and we'll talk about erosion and buffers and trees and shrubs and hopefully I can answer all their questions. Um, so far I've been, it's been really well received by the groups I've spoken with and they're very kind. My next big venture will be rain barrels. And we're going to do water catch systems. Um, I'm hoping to be able to utilize either the library when it's complete or the Smith Building to complete, to finish those. And I have a company, the reason for the delay in that is I have a company who's willing to give me everything to do it. But I have to wait until they get the barrels empty. Um, they have to be food service grade barrels, you can't use a petroleum barrel for a water catch system, it'll kill all your plants. So I have a company out of Anderson who uses cooking oil, who's willing to clean and sanitize those barrels and give them to us. And then Lowe's is going to give us everything else we need to finish out the rain barrel system. That's huge, because the average cost from any workshop I've attended ranges from twenty five to fifty dollars each. So we're just doing fun things, I hope you all can come by. If nothing else, come get a lilac, water test, um, if you need me, I'm there every day. And thank you for the opportunity.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
I have to say that I'm here, this is my seventh year, this is the first time that anybody from out there's ever came up here and gave a presentation. So I kind of appreciate that because we don't ever get to see you guys out there. And I have heard nothing from but good about her, the job she's doing out there.
I appreciate that.
Awesome. I have one other public service announcement for anyone who drives down Highway three starting this evening. For the next two, possibly three weeks, Highway three will be closed. Don't yell at us, we did not do it. It's part of a culvert replacement underneath Highway three. So, and it's just preparation for coming events because three's going to be jacked up for the next two years. So just brace yourself and hold on for the ride. There's no other comments from the public, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned, thank you all.